All right, we ready to get started?
We're ready.
All right, well, thank you everybody for joining us for May 5th, 2020 Planning Commission. Before we get started, I'm going to lead you all in the Pledge of Allegiance and Mr. Covert is going to lead us in the invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
States of America. Which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Father, we come to you tonight seeking wisdom for the future of our city and the decisions that we make tonight. Lord, we lift up our President and his staff, the Governor of Arkansas and his staff and the Mayor of Springdale and his staff, Lord, asking that you give them wisdom and guidance through this time. We ask for a special blessing, Lord, around doctors, nurses, teachers, and any frontline workers that are dealing with this horrible pandemic. God, we ask that you would use it to your grace and your strength and bless us in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Again, thank you guys for joining us again. I think this went pretty well last time and we'll follow the same processes and so be patient with us as far as we do conduct this meeting via the Zoom piece on it. If we could do roll call.
Howard Austin.
Here.
Gary Compton.
Here Debbie, but I can barely hear Kevin at all.
Is that better?
A little bit.
Roy Covert.
Here.
James David, Shannon Mueller, Peyton Parker.
Here.
Kevin Parsley.
Here.
Ben Peters. Dale Tower.
Here.
Okay, any question for April's minutes? If we don't, I was looking for a motion and a second.
I'd move to approve the minutes from April.
Okay, you have a motion? Motion by Dr. Compton?
Second.
I don't know who that was, sorry.
I'm sorry, it's Roy, second.
Okay, thanks Roy. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? All right. So first item on the agenda is propose revisions to Chapter 112 subdivision regulations of code of ordinances, section 112.8, to update procedures for development plan approval presented by Patsy Christie.
As we discussed at the last meeting, we're looking at updating this one. We started with just updating the number of copies that have to be submitted, but this one's a little bit more extensive because our section in the code about development plans was pretty limited, so we've kind of expanded it out and to cover some of the procedures in the way we've been doing it for several many years. I'm going to hit some of the highlights and if anybody has any questions, stop me along the way and we'll keep going. We did add to the development, to the definition of what a development plan is, anything that's submitted for developments, building construction, and parking lots. And that's one of those that has been kind of unclear in the past about whether or not parking lot had to have a development plan. And we've added that to this ordinance before they can get a grading permit and/or a building permit and they can't get temporary or permanent connections to city utilities until we've had that development plan approved. And in the past it said single-family and duplex construction and now we're saying that only single-family residential projects are exempt from the need for a development plan, so we pick up duplexes if, we've had some concerns with those over the years. It goes on to define as we had previously, what is a large scale and what is a non-large scale. Large scale being anything an acre and above, a non-large scale being anything an acre or less. The same requirements, it's just how you review the process and whether it comes to planning commission or not, depending on those two types. And then there are the two exemptions that we had before. If a non-large scale comes in and we determine that there are significant problems with it like storm drainage, traffic, pedestrian circulation, anything like that, it can be referred to the planning commission for review and approval rather than getting staff free approval. And then any developments that were plotted prior to 2002, as the, as each of the individual lots come in for a large-scale development plan, it doesn't have to go through, it's handled as a non-large scale, again unless there's any significant problems or variances that need to occur. One of the major changes is we are inserting a section that requires a pre-application conference with staff before they submit a large-scale or a non-large-scale development for review. And the purpose of that is so that we get a chance to sit down with the owner and the developer and talk about the city's regulations, the stormwater issues, the traffic issues, the design standards that apply, and all of those are discussed before they start submitting their process. We hope to be able to head off some problems on the front end rather than having them get all the way into the first submission and we got things that haven't been dealt with. It goes on through that to indicate, and there's no fee charge for that pre-application conference. We should change the number of copies that have to be submitted, three hard copies of the large scale, one digital copy of the plan, colored building elevations, and one digital copy of the preliminary drainage report, along with the filing fee, has to be filed for the large-scale development plan and the non-large scale. And that's the submission that we start with. We added a review criteria, so everybody knows what we're looking at on the front end to see if that application is complete. Was it, did it meet all the requirements, did it have all the pieces that were submitted? Is it in compliance with the development or construction, the proposed development or construction would not violate a city, state, or federal law? There's no dangerous traffic conditions and that the utilities are available, either they have public water and sewer, they have water and/or have made arrangements for sewer development. And it has drainage, adequate drainage conditions on the front end. There may be some others, but that's the review criteria that we use on the front end. A large-scale development plan is always has to go through technical plat review, all of those comments are sent in, all of those large scales that are submitted are sent to each of the members of the technical review committee by digital means and they have to get their comments in. Those plans need to include landscaping, lighting, colored elevations, grading plan, drainage report, all of that has to be in there. And we have to know all of that is in place before we allow that to be put on the planning commission's agenda, so we don't get here with a project that's not complete. Once it gets to planning commission, the planning commission can either approve it, approve with conditions, disapprove it, or table it. Approval is pre, simple, planning commission approves it, constitutes a ready for construction, doesn't say it's ready for construction, it's ready to move forward to get plans and specs approved. If it's approved with conditions, we always do that with a motion, subject to staff comments, we want to make sure the developer knows that and when his signature that he has had a conditional approval with those statements in there, and they have to be addressed before he can move forward. Or if it's disapproved, we have to give that to him in writing. Same thing if it's tabled one time, it doesn't require it to be notified, notification again. If it gets tabled a second time, then you've got to go back through the process and re-notify. Section on how adjustments and alterations are made, that's really not much change, we've gone through that a few times. Any substantial change has to come to the planning commission. I make the determination on the magnitude of the alteration, whether or not it's substantial or not, those, my decisions can be appealed to you guys. It expires if it hasn't, well, what we did is list out what constitutes it being in development stage enough so it doesn't expire after a year. They have to have a building permit, they have to pour footings, and they have to have their permits and approvals that are needed, so that we don't get things that keep lagging along and along we keep renewing them. And it, this gives us a chance to extend it one year and it's the same thing that would apply for that first extension that it did at the very beginning to see that it's moving on long as it should, if it's not, they have to come in and resubmit it again. Staff review, same thing we do for non-large scales as we have been doing, same different steps for approval, approval with conditions or disapproval, that way we have in writing what is approval with conditions, everybody knows what that is. Any adjustments or alterations are the same kind of things as you would for a large-scale, same requirements on how it expires and the extensions. The only difference is that a non-large scale doesn't have to come to the planning commission itself. The section on plans and specifications hasn't changed except for the number of copies that have to be submitted. The fees have not changed and we did upgrade the chart that was included in the ordinance so that if it, if it has to be on that, it says yes or no, not with X's because there's always been a question, does it X mean it has to be there or it doesn't have to be there? So now it says yes and no and nobody can question that anymore. We did include a new section on final inspection, on what has to be done to get a certificate of completion, a site final inspection, and then the building final inspections. And the things that we are looking for, what are the completed improvements that means that it's ready for final inspection, is addressed items like drainage, fire, planting, streets. So those are the items that we're going to want to see this in place before we consider the large scale to be completed. It's just a little bit more detailed than what we had before and then they get a C of O once all those things have been taken care of. Basically, those are the changes if anybody's got any questions.
Thank you, Patsy. Any questions or comments? And I'm looking up there to see if you guys have anyone on the phone or any chats that came in. Okay. All right, it's to the commission.
This would be a motion to recommend it to the City Council for approval.
Motion to move the City Council for approval.
Motion by Mr. Covert. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Austin.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton? Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
So that was seven, is that right?
Yes.
Sorry. So that passes seven zero.
Then it will go to council next Tuesday night.
So next section is rezoning, first rezoning, 20-13 WT-LF LLC, south of Don Tyson Parkway, east side of I-49, from A-1 to C-5, presented by Expedia Civil Engineering.
And I am here to represent that.
Jason, is that you?
It is, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Okay. So we're just trying to clean up the acreage here for our large-scale development, there was a piece, a triangular piece about an acre and a half that fronted I-49 that was never rezoned, it was A-1. The surrounding zoning is around it is C-5, so we request that be C-5.
Okay, staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates regional commercial use, the rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval, improve the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations, assure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and in proper locations, and encourage the development of wide range of commercial development for the residents and tourists to include neighborhood, community, and regional centers.
Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, it's to the commission. It's be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes. Rezoning passes seven zero.
Chairman, if I can make a quick request, if folks on the Zoom would just mute their microphone, we're picking up a lot of background noise if you're just listening, if you could mute your microphone until your name's called or until you need to speak, that would be great, thank you.
Thanks Roy, we can't always hear as far as what else going on on that, so I appreciate you bringing that up.
Staff will prepare the ordinance, it goes to council on the 26th.
All right, next section is, we have a replat 20-05, replat lots, is that one and two or 12? One and two?
One and two.
Okay, I thought I was reading that correctly, there was a little bit of space on that.
I'm sorry, one and two.
Yeah. Hammet F., or Oof Business Center, southwest corner of Hale Lane and 40th Street, presented by ESI.
Thank you, this is Jason with ESI. Yeah, we're just combining these two lots for the large-scale presented later in the meeting.
Staff comments?
Only comment we have is add the required signatures.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the general public? Okay, it's to the commission.
This is a motion.
Have a motion?
Motion to approve, subject staff comments.
Motion by Mr. Covert. I have a second. Second by Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton? Compton? Gary Compton?
You're on mute, doctor.
You're muted. Nod your head yes.
Okay. I'm sorry Debbie, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay, replat passes seven zero.
If you want this to go to council next Tuesday evening, the ordinance needs to be in our office by Thursday at noon.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a final plat 20-01, final plats Hilton Place subdivision phase one, east side of Hilton, north of Howard Anderson Road, presented by ESI.
Yeah, this is Jason with ESI again. We are presenting the final plat for the first phase which includes about, which includes 52 buildable lots for Hilton Place, question your approval.
Staff comments?
We have no further comments.
Any questions or comments from the public? It's to the commission.
No, there's some people coming in.
Oh, there, oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I just wanted to make sure, yeah, we had a final plat on there, I just wanted to make sure you, okay, thank you. All right, it's to the commission. This be a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Covert.
Second.
Second by Mr. Peters.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton? Compton? Okay, he's nodding, y'all don't remember witnesses to that. Covert?
Yes.
All right, final plat passes seven zero.
You want this to go to council next Tuesday evening, the ordinance needs to be in our office by noon on Thursday.
Thank you.
And once, once that's done, I'm assuming that you guys are going to need signatures from, pretty fast on that too, okay?
Well, yeah, I don't know, we don't have all the bonding stuff together.
Okay.
They may do have some questions, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes. So Jay, this is on the large scale that we just, I'm sorry, the final plat that we just did?
Austin, can you point out where, what did you say, Stone?
Stonehenge.
Stonehenge.
Oh, Jason, if you want to answer that, we have some, the general public that has some questions as far as where this is in relation to Stonehenge.
Stonehenge. Help me, help me where Stonehenge is. Is it to the north?
I believe Stonehenge is to the north.
Are you to the north of that, of this? If you'll come up to the mic here. Okay.
Well, here's a hard copy. That might help.
Yeah, if you can go up to the mic and just state your name and address for me, please.
Here's a hard copy she can look at.
Hi, I'm Priscilla Duncan, I live at 3897 Stonehenge Avenue, Springdale.
I don't think this mic is on, on that one, so. It's all, it's all on?
Well, if you, I think Stonehenge is just right.
What are they doing here?
A few.
See, they've completely changed it from the original.
If you look at the little vicinity map in the corner, you can see where it is.
Lots. Let's open it up. It's not on here. Okay, so they're approving what they've already worked on, is what they're doing here.
Right, right, they're getting to the point where they can start selling lots. The streets have to be 85% complete, the water insurance has to be 90% complete before it can come to us, and all that's done, and that's why we're at this stage to do the final plat, so they can start selling lots.
Okay, well, that doesn't involve our property at all, so I'm not sure why we got the letter.
Because you're an adjacent property owner, and all adjacent property owners get notified when the preliminary plat comes and when the final plat comes too.
Well, not to this plat, we're not an adjacent property owner. Stonehenge is not even on, doesn't even touch where this is, all of Stonehenge.
The lots on the south side of Stonehenge may back up to this one piece on the side, is all.
Well, they'll be down to the east, if that's north and south up there correctly, your very last street on there, Stonehenge is going to be to the east of that, where it's not even.
Actually, I think it's right up there, see this street right here that they just built in, and I think it's right up there.
No.
Well, that's what they're saying about.
This is Butterfield Coach, this is Bowen. That's Hamlet, and we're over here. We're down here, we're off the map.
Okay.
We're to your right, way off the map, we're not even adjacent to that, so. All those letters went out, I guess, in error. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Next section is large scale, the first one is L-20-11 Williams Tractor, south of Don Tyson Parkway, east side of I-49. Also, variance B-20-18, variance for deviation landscaping per Chapter 56, variance for deviation commercial design standards, presented by Expedia Civil Engineering.
Jason Ingles with Expedia Civil Engineering. So Williams Tractor is looking to relocate their facilities, there'll be two buildings proposed on the property. One is a Powersports building, that's the one on the north, and the one on the south would be the tractor building that sells tractors. We have shown asphalt areas for the parking as well as the display areas. We are requesting variance to allow some gravel for storage on the lot. I think ordinance only allows a certain amount, so we're asking for a variance on that. I will say, I'll talk to that, that it's very wooded both to the north, south, and east of this property, and we've also provided landscaping along the perimeter as required by ordinance. It will have a rather long driveway connection from 48th Street into the property. That driveway is kind of steep as you come into the property, the head, I-49, it's a grade. Things relating to commercial design standards and site design that we're asking a variance on just due to that, the fact that it's along 48th Street. And with that, I will answer any questions that may happen.
In the packet, all we saw was just for the Freedom Powersports, we didn't have anything as far as any drawings for the second building.
But you see on the street there, the tractor building.
Okay, is that the tractor building?
Yes, ma'am.
We just don't have color elevation for the tractor building, we only have that for the Freedom Powersports.
Right, we don't have the color elevations for both buildings. Can you go to the color elevations?
The Powersports shows the color, the rest of it's pretty much a gray town.
And so that western, go ahead.
This is Bill Weedow, or the architect, can I interject?
You can.
Okay, this is the Powersports, the other drawing you had up, that's it, yes, that's the tractor facility, the tractor equipment building.
Okay, where are the color elevations for this building?
Well, we turned in color elevations, I'm not sure that I could answer that.
Okay, Austin, can you go to the other, what other sheets we have? Yeah.
It don't look like you do have it.
So the east elevation of the building has no breaks in it, it's just a metal building all the way down through there, correct?
That's, that's correct, that is the back of the building.
That you see from 48, the back of the building that faces 48th Street, right?
Well, it faces 48th Street, but if you notice from the site plan and the drawing, or the photo that showed the wooded acreage, there's a long way between 48th Street and that, and it's actually backed up in where it's, there will be trees left between this and the street, 48th Street.
Did you provide us with a plan that shows what trees are going to be saved?
Should be shown on the landscape plan too, there's a wooded area with the tree protection fence showing around all areas of the wooded areas that we're saving along the perimeter.
Okay, what percentage of that side is going to be left gravel? And what, and why does it need to be gravel?
All the turning that we do with all the.
You guys are cutting in and out.
You can, you can see on this drawing that's shown, the dotted, that's, that's trees that are left, and then the areas that look like gravel behind the buildings, there's not nearly as much in the Powersports, there's a lot more of the building, of the woods that are left remaining, that's why, that being the back of the building, we felt like the metal siding there would be acceptable. And if I can, if I can also interject, Bill, the east side of that Powersports building, we're cutting the grade down quite a bit. Correct. It's, there's a natural berm of about 10 to 15 feet high that hides the building from any adjacent property to the east.
But you didn't show us that on the plans, that there is a natural berm to show that screening.
Patsy, look at the grading plan.
Well, is it just going to be left natural or are you going to use it as a berm that meets the requirements of landscaping ordinance?
Look at the grading.
Okay, that's the landscaping plan, right there, right?
Right, but look at the grading plan, C-5.0. Flip to the C-5.0 if you can.
It's not, it's not loaded on this.
Because it shows the contours and the grading of the property down to the That's why I'm requesting you to. It would get pretty crowded if we showed those graded berm on the landscape plan. Or we're not showing it, we're showing the landscape tree, the trees and stuff pertaining to landscaping.
Let me go through.
Yeah, I was getting ready to say, why don't you go ahead and go through all your staff comments on this and we'll come back to.
We have some standard comments of all comments from utility companies and other city departments must be addressed, underground utilities, if anything, that's excluding 12 KV and above. The gravel area exceeds the maximum acreage allowed within the existing C-5. We show it to be roughly four to five, four and a half acres is what's shown as being left as gravel. We didn't find dumpster locations and how the dumpster is going to be screened. The tree planting along the western property line appears to be spaced around 40 feet as opposed to 25 feet as set forth in the landscaping requirements. You asked for variances for the continuous internal pedestrian walkways, the providing of community and public facilities, you asked for variance on. You asked for variance on that. A variance on the facades and the break in the facades and the roof. No building foundation landscaping. The roof line, there's no breaks. You're asking for a variance of the roof line breaks. And a variance of the exterior predominant materials. And predominant exterior materials, as well as accents, should be compatible with the surrounding area." So there's several commercial design standard variances that are being requested in addition to those that are being asked for the landscaping requirements. The summary of the engineering comments is, "The concrete plat is required in the drainage esements. Note needed to show the hundred-year water surface elevations in the ponds. Revision needed in time of concentration calculations. Add note about stockpiling. Label lights as public or private and existing proposed. And is there any spacing plan for the grading recommendations?" And then I need to ask engineering about improvements to Forty-Eighth Street because we were, we had to get waivers for Forty-Eighth Street on the property down the street. Is there a reason why we don't have one on this one? So, those are the, those are the comments. We can go into all the details about all of the commercial design standards. There are a significant number of variance requests to the commercial design standards.
I would like to add, Patsy Christie, I saw the comments about the trees along I forty-nine and the west property line. That's item two in the variance letter that we submitted to request the variance of fifty-foot spacing on the trees. And our reasoning and hardship for that was to provide visibility. Once those trees reach full maturity, it's going to block visibility. The whole purpose of having this is, I know the city wants a good entrance into the city. That's why we put trees and shrubs along there. That's why we requested that variance.
We lost you. We didn't get all of that.
What did, I'm sorry. I said we were, item two in my variance letter and that was submitted for variances, we requested a variance for the tree spacing along I forty-nine and twenty-five.
Now, you each have a copy of your letter. The letter that came along with each of the variance requests of why you're doing that. The one I have, I have a comment about two of that is your entryways. Each building has to define customer service entryways in lieu of three. We're not asking you to have three entrances. We're asking you to have three of those features at each of one of the entrances that you have. So I think you misunderstood with that. Canopies, display windows, there's a whole list of things that you have to have at each one of those entries. Not, we're not requiring you to have three entrance points.
Got you. And on the foundation landscaping, we requested variance on that, and there's a hardship given in the letter. But the number of plants that would have been required in the foundation landscaping, we sporadically place them in green spaces next to, in the parking aisles and other green spaces.
Well, it was hard to tell that that, what the number you were supposed to have and what number you put in there to say that you had done more. When you're changing the landscaping along the front, you're changing the landscaping around the building, all of the landscaping is being asked for a variance. It's hard to keep track of what we should have had and what we're actually getting. So, we need that calculation.
Table, Patsy. The landscaping plan, it falls out.
Your mic is cutting way in and out. I don't know if you're speaking from like a headphone set or what, but...
I'm sorry. Let me turn it down and see if that helps. I said on the landscape plan, sheet L one point zero, which is the sheet that she has up, there's table on the right-hand side. Calls out versus what we provided. And it breaks down like three perimeter landscaping.
Is there a different mic you guys can get on? Because we're hearing...
Can you hear me?
We're hearing, we're hearing as far as like the first five seconds, and then after that, you're cutting out.
Is that better?
That's better for now.
Good. Sheet L one point zero landscape plan on the right-hand side of the page spells out what was required versus what we provided.
Any comments on that, Patsy, or...
I haven't been over the numbers. It's really hard to track when, when you're... There's so many variances being asked for all the different elements of the...
Patsy, the variances are all requested. They're all stated in the variance letter.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. They're all there. A lot of variances for one project. Now, I'm not sure I understand. On this drawing, there's a pattern for the gravel area. And then you're saying that pattern and all the rest of it means all those trees are remaining? Because I don't see anything on here that says, and this print is really small, that it says what trees are being of the existing canopy. What is actually being saved?
Stated on the landscape.
We're not hearing any of the details that you're providing.
Got my laptop up as fast as I can, guys.
Well, the other concern I have is about the large area of being gravel. What kind of heavy equipment are you storing back there that would, you would need that much? Because our ordinance only allows heavy equipment, track equipment, to be stored on gravel. Everything else is supposed to be stored on an asphalt surface. What are you storing back there that would need that large of an area? Is it just tractors and ATVs and that kind of stuff?
Well, some of it's going to be, Williams Tractor does sell tractors, dozers. Unfortunately, that would be that type of equipment.
So you're going to have...
The other is the tractors. The ATVs, as related to the Powersports, that would be down there where the... And there's only a small amount of gravel to be provided to that Powersports building.
Well, I guess I'm confused in that the facility that's in Fayetteville does not have that many large tracks that would meet the definition of heavy equipment to be parked on gravel. Unless you intend to have a whole lot larger stock at this one than you have at the other of heavy equipment. It seems like a four acres of area to park heavy equipment is not consistent with what you have in Fayetteville. Tractors, anything that has rubber tires doesn't, doesn't meet the definition of being stored on a gravel area.
Well, let me ask you this. Does the city consider chip and seal the right surface? It doesn't have to be hot mix asphalt.
It has to be asphalt or concrete. Chip and seal is not considered to be the right surface. And then there's, you're asking for a variance of screening the outdoor storage, the dumpsters and that kind of stuff. Why, why is there a need? We talked about the outdoor storage. What about the dumpsters and equipment and that kind of stuff that's outside? Why is it not being screened?
The dumpsters, we had talked earlier that it would be behind the Powersports building where that natural ravine or slope of fifteen feet from the adjacent property to the east would act as a natural screen to screen that.
So you don't think the property just to the east of this, behind that facility is ever going to be developed? Is that what you're saying? That's why it doesn't need to be screened?
I'm sure it would, Patsy, when it's fifteen feet tall. Or will be once we've done our grading. And there's also a line of trees that we provided that we're protecting. And then the areas that didn't have trees, adding for ordinance to treat on sheet.
I'm assuming that our color dots on the landscaping plan are the new trees to be installed, correct?
Yes, ma'am, along the front, the perimeter.
Okay. So when you come up that drive just before it splits to go to both buildings, there's some, some trees planted along that as screening for those two areas, correct? But it doesn't go all the way to the north of the property?
No, because there's existing trees that we're planning to protect. We show it, that's around the trees.
Okay, so that inset that shows something around it, that's how you're going to preserve them, but you don't show how many trees are going to be preserved? Austin, can you go back to that aerial?
No, we, we didn't go out there and count each and every one of those trees. We put it in a calculation of lateral footage of trees and equated that to one per twenty-five or twenty-five yards.
But the drawing doesn't show which ones are to be preserved. If you located them out there and went around and put something around them, you didn't put them on the drawing so we know which ones were supposed to be preserved.
So hold on, Patsy.
Well, you're asking us to give you a variance to allow those to stay, and we have to know which ones are staying so we know we have them.
We said tree protection fencing around those trees. Plastic fencing that needs to be placed around those trees along the perimeter, on the south. Don't know that I can have to go. But when we did provide of those trees...
We can't hear what you're saying.
Is it possible you can call in on a cell phone or something else? Your laptop speaker is not working.
Let me see here. While he's doing that, can I interject something here?
Mm-hmm.
The gravel area out there is, I don't know what everyone's looking at, but we utilize a lot of space and we have a lot of track equipment and a lot of heavy tractors. I mean, and we have customers that bring in a lot of heavy equipment, and we have to store. There, there's a, there's a need for a lot of storage area out there, and that is probably barely sufficient. Just, just to kind of interject on what's being talked about. I mean, I don't know what everyone's looking at, but we have a ton of track equipment and heavy equipment that we have to take care of. And we'll tear up asphalt. So I just wanted to make sure everyone was clear on that.
Well, what we're seeing on the drawing, especially on, for the tractor side of things, is unless it's display space fronting I forty-nine or parking, you're basically asking for any storage to be gravel. So it's, what I'm interpreting on here is, is a hundred percent of any of your equipment that's brought in as far as, that you're doing work on, or it's backstock that you have, you're in essence asking for a hundred percent of that space to be gravel, which I would equate to a hundred percent of your backstock is track-type equipment. I think what we're asking, I don't think we're telling you no on gravel space, but based on how you have this, it gives indication that all of your backstock is going to be stored on gravel. And then I, I don't really know why that's, for the powersports piece of that, I'm still struggling to understand as far as the need for gravel at all in that space there. So, am I interpreting that correctly as far as for the tractor side? It looks where you have anything coming in for repairs or maintenance, whatever it might be, or any of your backstock that is not for display? You're basically asking for all of that to be gravel. Is that a fair assumption based off of what I'm seeing on the drawing?
Well, I think we're going to utilize, you know, as much space as possible. I think we were just, I think we just need, I think we would like to have a lot of space for that with gravel just to keep the equipment clean and, and, you know, among other things.
This is Bill Weedower again. What would be the alternative that the city would want? I mean, ecologically, gravel is better than asphalt. What, would that be asphalt otherwise? Is that what you're...
Well, again, it's not that we're advocating in wanting you to have to comply as far as all of it being asphalt. Specifically, what I was calling out is, is, you know, based off of what meets the requirements as far as allowing for gravel is equipment that is considered track equipment. So what I'm interpreting, and again, I'm just trying to get clarity from you all, what I'm interpreting is, is all of your backstock and all maintenance that coming in, all that equipment would be classified as track equipment?
No, it would not all be classified as track equipment, but a lot of that equipment is heavy.
And that's why we're asking for a variance.
Well, I understand why you're asking for a variance, but, I mean, other types of locations that have heavy equipment comply with either a concrete or asphalt type of surface for even heavy equipment. It's more about the track equipment. I completely understand that that would be, you'd tear that up fast as far as it wouldn't be good for the equipment and it wouldn't be good as far as for the surface. And I understand that piece.
How much is allowed on this piece of property? You said this is about four acres of gravel.
I'm looking. Is it one acre? I believe it's one acre. That's the maximum that's allowed in the ordinance for gravel areas is one acre.
In this zone?
Yes.
So, can you guys hear me?
Yes, that's better. Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes.
What would the city, what would be an acceptable variance up to that one acre? What, what, it's obvious that we've got too much gravel shown. It sounds like. So what's a happy medium that would be acceptable?
I think, that's not real, I don't know that's a decision we can be able to have for you on this. I mean, I think, again, I go back to the questions as far as your backstock. I mean, you guys know your business very well, and that's as far as what percentage of that is non-track equipment versus that would be track both as far as your backstock that you sell along with what comes in. To me, that would be unacceptable as far as what a percentage would look like. I don't know what that would equate to in, from the acreage perspective.
You have other locations that would be similar to this and can kind of tell us what you do at other locations as to how much is track area and how much is not?
Yes.
Most, most of that's just parked on the, you know, what eventually turns to dirt. And so I would think the gravel would be a much better alternative. I mean, it's very, to me, anyway.
Yeah, I don't know that we're going to solve this particular piece here at the table. I mean, if, if that's a variance that we want to continue with, I'd recommend that something be worked out a little bit more than what we're seeing here because, again, I equate to all the backstock and all of anything coming in for maintenance is considered that they want to have as far as gravel. And I, I kind of struggle with that as far as that percentage in that whole piece there. Is there something that's more acceptable? Absolutely.
This is Peyton. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Peyton.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the question's pretty straightforward, right? What's the, what's the mix of heavy equipment to, that could not be put on asphalt to what could be put on, right? That's the question we're trying to gather from you. Not the other way around. We're trying to ask what's the breakdown for your business. It's not, we know it's not a hundred percent. So that's the question, as I understand it.
Let's move on to the other variances.
So let's, let's keep that one aside.
I don't know the, yeah, I don't know the answer to that. Gary may be able to, Gary Tullott may be able to answer that, or he may be thinking what that number is. So we'll let him respond. what that number is, so we'll let him respond.
Okay.
I'll just also, I think my, the other comment I'd make is that, you know, again, if we need a variance in one area like paving, for example, I see that as a place that we, then with other variances that could, that relate to that, is maybe not somewhere where we do a variance. So, what gives me heartburn is that we want to do four acres of gravel, and we also want variances on all the landscaping requirements. So, to me, it's, we've got to find somewhere, there's got to be a give and take, it can't just be take, take, take. So, if we need to do less asphalt and have more gravel, that's fine, but I would say that it would be, then what I'd be looking for is not asking for so many other variances for all types of things, right? That's just me.
I'm in agreement with Peyton on this. There's definitely alternatives as far as how there's a compromise in that whole piece there. And then, you know, the frontage, I think the other variances were sidewalk requirements, and then public features are some of the other variances in that. Sidewalks I kind of struggle with, because there is frontage and, versus the frontage on I-49, the frontage as far as on 48th Street is far less. And we've had sidewalks put in from the neighborhood market, Casey's, and others that are going along as far as that 48th Street. Now, if there's any improvement plans at 48th Street, another recommendation is, is that if you don't want to put those in, you can do payment in lieu of. And so, those are other options to consider as well as far as the sidewalk requirements.
I don't think that that was our variance request. I think the sidewalk along 48th, there may already be an existing one there. I believe that there is.
I think it is.
Our variance was the connection to the public sidewalk to the areas on site for use for parking, unless I misunderstood the ordinance.
In other words, you do not want to put a sidewalk along the drive that comes to 48th Street to the front of the buildings.
Correct.
Okay, sorry, I was misunderstanding that, so.
Because you didn't anticipate anybody ever walking up there.
That's a long distance to walk to buy a tractor and an R81G.
And it is real steep.
That's just me thinking out loud, I, you know, I don't know.
Is there a bus stop where the drive comes into the street? That's the only reason you would need a sidewalk. I don't think anybody's gonna stop at the street and let somebody out to walk up there.
Well, I think that's an example of things that we can work with as far as.
I think you have to figure out what are the most important things that you really have to have variances for, and what things can you do to limit the number of variances that you're asking for.
The other thing that I, this is Peyton again, the other thing I think that I would just caution against is just us looking at this area like it is today and kind of making decisions based on what that looks like right now. I mean, this is a prime piece of frontage on the 49th. There's gonna be development in this area, so I mean, I think, you know, again, I will agree with, maybe we don't need sidewalks on both sides all the way up, but, again, I just want to caution that, you know, this area will continue to be developed to the north and the south, and, you know, this is the opportunity to get it right, right? Assuming that these buildings are gonna be here, this business will be here for a long, long time. If we don't, if we don't take that into account, we don't get another option to correct, we don't get another opportunity to correct that.
Can you make this contention upon building a sidewalk, once a sidewalk is built up on 48th Street?
There's a sidewalk on 48th Street already. It was built with the street.
I see, I see. Never mind.
Well, let me just throw this out here, and I don't know if, I can't speak on behalf of the owner, but I don't see it on here anymore, but if we were to ask for all the variances for the landscaping and pave what was required, even though it's not shown on the plan today, what would that look like? Is staff and commissioners in support of that, or how do we move this forward and along here? Because we've, we really need to get going with construction, and I don't really want to be pushed another month, if that makes sense.
Well, let me make one comment.
If paving is what's holding us up, I'd like to get the owner to, you know, to say, yeah, that would be acceptable to pave more area to meet ordinance if we could get all of the, all the other variances.
Well, it sounds like if he could come up with a number or percentage of that space that would be track-type equipment, he could, he could still at least justify that. Peyton, isn't that what you said? That if we, he came up with?
That's what I was trying to get at, right? Because that's the thing about a variance, is there's got to be, there's got to be a hardship there. It can't just be we don't want to do it. And so, what I was thinking was that, yeah, there's, it would be a hardship on the owner to pave something that is just going to get torn up. So, I was thinking, whatever that mix is, you have to tell us, I mean, and then I think that gives us a place to work with, and that percentage of area, we don't worry about paving, and then the other, the other stuff we do. That was my thought.
Well, let me interject.
Let me make one more comment before we go any further, okay? What we don't want to get as a planning commission sitting at the table, it's, let's make a deal on variances. You give me this one, I'll give you that one. That really doesn't work for good solid designer projects. We're not here to design it at the table, and we're not here to make, let's make a deal. If you want to propose something different and change your variances, that's one thing. It needs to be submitted, but you're asking, especially in these days when we're not all sitting at the table together, it's hard to talk about, well, can we do this instead of that, and do this instead of that? I would caution the planning commission of getting into the, let's make a deal with variances.
Yeah, I would agree, and I just, since we've got the owner here and we've got the architect here, can I just tell the, can I just say the things that I don't feel comfortable about having a variance for, just so that they know that they can, they can work offline and figure out a new plan, or work with staff, or whatever, but from my point of view, building facade design is not hardship stuff. I think that just needs to comply. I would, I do think the sidewalk is something that I'm not 100% today that we have to have it. Also, the paving for whatever portion, you know, equates to the heavy equipment, I'm okay with a variance from that, but screening, I just, I'm not, I don't feel comfortable in probably doing variances for landscaping, screening, things like that, that actually hinder business, I would be open to, open to a variance for. That's just me.
Let me just ask this question real quick. Are you just defining track equipment as heavy equipment, or are you defining, you know, 120-horse tractors that are on rubber tires, that's heavy equipment and over time will, you know, really wear down asphalt? So, you know, I think, hey, we just want to get along. I'm a Springdale graduate. I am happy, I was thrilled when the opportunity came up to be able to try and move this business to Springdale and add, you know, 75, 80 jobs, a lot of tax dollars, I think, and so that was my intention all along. I looked at Springdale and I looked nowhere else. So, we're not trying to bend the rules here or anything like that, this is where we want to be. You know, track equipment's probably 50% of our inventory, I guess, but we have huge tractors. Asphalt may not make a lot of sense. That, I think that's where we're coming from. I don't think it was, gosh, we want a lot of gravel here because it's great for us, or, you know, and it's bad for the city. I want to put something on that piece of property that makes Springdale proud. We're not gonna put anything on there that looks bad. We're not gonna skimp on the landscaping. It's gonna be two really, really nice buildings, and they're gonna look good from every direction. So, I'll answer any questions you want, and we'll try and comply the best we can, but, you know, at some point, I just don't know what else to tell you on the gravel. It makes sense to me to put a lot of gravel out there. It's gonna be cleaner, it's just gonna be, it's gonna be a good environment, but.
So, Patsy, was there any more staff comments?
Well, we haven't talked about the building itself and the elevations. The major material of this building, this is a metal building, because the backside's not, doesn't have any changes to it, most of the ends, it's not predominantly something other than metal.
Okay.
And the other side is the screening of the dumpsters and the landscaping. It may be enough, it's really hard to tell, because from what I see, you can't tell what trees are actually being preserved.
Okay. Was there any questions or comments from the general public? None, okay. Just wanted to make sure we kind of got sideways on some of the dialogue there, so I wanted to make sure we covered that. And I, forgive me, I don't know who was speaking last on there. We have no doubt that this is a great business for Springdale, and we want, we absolutely would love to have Williams Tractor a part of our city, and I do appreciate that as far as, you know, your roots as far as within Springdale. I think what Peyton had brought up, I agree with, that, you know, on the building, where I stand on this is that on, we have allowed a lot of, and we've approved some great metal buildings. They've been more of a higher grade as far as metal. You can look as far as some new developments along wagon wheel roads that really represent that well. In addition, they have also complied as far as for lengths of areas, as far as long durations of area, to have appropriate breaks in that. There's Electrical Supply Company a couple of years ago that we passed, and we went through some of that, and some of the breaks that they made in there made a dramatic difference to the facade of the building. So, I think along 49, I would agree with you as far as that, and then the north and south views, that's, it's definitely as far as, you've done some good work there. It's the backside of the buildings, but I think as far as what Peyton was talking about, we'd look for some more compliance with that as far as the breaks. I agree as far as the sidewalk piece as well, as far as, you know, where I stand on some of that as far as the variance, I mean, I think some of that would be acceptable. The gravel pit place, again, that really needs to be more based off of the percentage of your total track business. The heavy equipment based off of how Patsy has read through things, those are considered to be paved areas. It's where you do have track equipment. And let's just say that it's 25% of your business. I mean, if that's what you would be asking for, of course, that area to be gravel, I think that would be acceptable in that whole piece, but it's really hard to determine that here at the table and to make all those decisions.
Can I ask a question? You mentioned if his track area is 25%.
I gave that as an example.
He has four acres now, 25% would be one acre, that wouldn't require a variance. If he said it was 50%, would we be able to ask for a variance for another acre to double that from one to two? I'm just trying to get how that.
Yeah, I think that's what we're recommending to you as far as how to look at it, but how you have this defined right now, it's 100% of your backstock space, and I struggle to understand that 100% of your backstock is track equipment.
Well, that clarifies that tremendously for me. Gary, do you understand that?
Sure.
If we ask for, if we put two acres of gravel, we're asking for a 50, well, actually 100% of the variance, but it's 50% of your, of what we have now.
Well, like I said, it may not be 50%, but it's more than 25%, so.
Well, and that changes with time, obviously. I think what Jason was asking too, is there a way on some of these variances that we can say like this, we say we will change the gravel area to.
We're not doing trading.
Two acres rather than four.
We're not doing trading as far as the different variances and things like that. And I agree with Peyton as well as far as that, as far as screening is concerned, you need to meet the requirements, and if you have taken some of your landscaping, and as long as you have as far as the total percentage for the development, and you've reallocated that to other areas, as long as it's clearly defined, and I think that's what Patsy has been articulating as well, as long as it's clearly defined as far as where that is, as far as a relocation of that, but your percentages are still whole, we're good with that.
Kevin, is it possible that we could just do one variance at a time? Because we're bouncing around between all the variances right now. And I get more out of, I can just discuss one and get that out of the way.
Thank you, Dan.
Kevin, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Kevin, this is Gary Compton. There are 12 different variance requests that are in front of us right now. I'm just not very comfortable at all with the negotiations of what's the most important and what's the least important. I certainly am glad that they're considering to build on that site. It's a good site, it's a really visible site for us today and in the future, so I couldn't be happier. But they submitted 12 different variance requests. I don't know what's most important or least, but it's impossible for me to negotiate this tonight. I don't know how we do that. So, just my concern is, we have commercial design standards, we support them, we develop them, we want them. This pretty much is eliminating a lot of those commercial design standards, in my opinion.
Well, thank you, Gary. So, I think what's, well, there's two different things that were brought up on here. One is to handle each of these variances individually, but to Gary's point, 12 is a lot, and I don't know that you're going to see the votes as far as this commission reflect as far as progress in this, or is there opportunity? I know you mentioned earlier you don't want to wait another month, but this is really a struggle for us to be able to handle tonight as far as all of these details.
Sure, and I don't know. I don't think the owner's still on board.
I'm here.
Is Gary here?
I'm here.
How do you feel about?
It doesn't sound like they want to vote in our favor tonight.
Whoever's talking is really.
It's Jason, he's talking through his computer and his phone.
Jason, if I can make a.
I am here. Hold on just a second.
Is that Mr. Covert that was getting ready to say something?
Is that better?
Yeah, that's fine, that's all I was gonna ask, is we just mute the laptop and chat fix. Thank you.
Sorry about that, guys. So, yeah, Gary, we're just, it doesn't sound like they're gonna vote in our favor tonight, so I'm leaning to you on, on direction.
What are the options? Can we table it till the next meeting, and make changes, or do we have to resubmit?
No, you can table it, and that'll give you the opportunity to work more, work again directly as far as with the planning commission, and we can definitely work through some of these details as far as the 12 variances, and get it to a much more manageable direction as we move forward in there. I think what you heard from.
If we were voted down, what would be, how would we resubmit?
Just table it.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Okay.
Let me make one suggestion. We have, we have a work session scheduled in two weeks. Would it be possible for you to meet with the planning commission at that work session where we could actually sit down and talk about more details?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds like a great idea.
That might make it easier for everybody. You're tabled a month, but that gives us a chance to, and you can submit stuff to staff back and forth, and we can get it for. back and forth and we can get it forward, but we would have a chance at that meeting to sit down and talk about more details than we are tonight.
Hey, Patsy, this is Roy. If I can ask one quick favor, and that is between now and the two weeks when we have that session together, can they please call your office and get a very succinct list, detailed list of exactly what it is you're looking for, so that when they do come to the planning meeting, we can, we can knock it off one by one and get them prepared to go move forward.
I think we can just go down the variance list one at a time. We met once and talked about some of these and didn't make changes. They decided to come forward with some of the things we've already talked about. But yes, we can, we can come up with a list of what are the most important items that we need to move forward with to bring to you guys at the meeting. And the meeting would be on the 19th at 5:30.
Okay, so we will, if you guys are okay with this, we will table this and we will pick this up in a work session on May the 19th.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys, and appreciate everyone's patience as we talk through. I think you've got a good perspective though as far as, you know, what, what we're looking for in this. Again, I think Dr. Compton put it well as far as we've, we've worked hard as far as our commercial design standards, and we do recognize that there are times as far as that there is some variances, but 12 is excessive in that whole piece. And so, we look forward to working with you through the month and so that we can get this approved this next month on it. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, L-20-12, Randall Tyson Park, southwest corner of 40th Street and Watkins Avenue, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jason Apple with ESI. So, we're presenting the improvement plan for Tyson Park. We are closing approximately 200 parking spaces in addition to what's there currently. Splash park, restroom facility, basketball. They're in the center, center area, replacing one of the soccer fields, volleyball, same volleyball, and then also looking at all of the areas around the concession and restroom facilities, taking out concrete, demoing those areas and replacing that with ADA accessible pathways. And all new lighting within the, within the sports park. And I'll answer any further questions.
Staff comments?
Standard comments of, all comments from other utility companies and city departments must be addressed. Underground utilities, anything under 12 KV. I think the only engineering comment that's left is the splash pad can't be tied into the sanitary sewer, and I think you all have addressed that. And the other question is, the Miracle Field parking lot, is it included in the drainage analysis?
Yes, it was, and we'll verify that through engineering.
Okay, that's all I've got.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience, or from the public? To the commission. This will be a motion in a second. Motion by Mr. Covert.
I'm sorry, folks, we're going to have to mute our phones or our laptops so we can hear the meeting. This is Roy, I make a motion that we approve, please.
This is Dale, I'll second.
I have a second by Mr. Tyler. Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
The large scale passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next large scale, 20-14, Go Punch List, southwest corner of Hale Lane and 40th Streets, variance for deviation of commercial design standards, presented by ESI.
This is Jason with ESI again. We've been working on this piece of property for a couple of years, trying to find the right fit for it. And we're proposing a 9,900 square foot building, multiple entrances on the north and south, or on the east and west sides. We are asking for a variance for the metal panel. The predominant material is metal panel. We are showing, we're asking for an architectural panel that, that we've, we've had in the past. There's a kind of a more specific panel that we would like to use, different than just your standard R-panel, obviously, architectural panel. So, I'll try to answer any questions as it pertains to the large scale. I've also got the architect on, on board, online, and the owner as well. So, I'll answer any questions. Thank you.
Staff comments?
Standard comments of, other comments from utility companies, underground utilities as we had in the past. Now, you've changed the concept of, it's not going to have a detention pond anymore, correct?
Correct. We've, we've added a pipe that's going to basically do an underground detention system within that area. The restraints or constraints on the distance from the 100-year water service elevation with this real narrow piece of property, we just couldn't, we couldn't meet, so we just, we tried to place that underground in this, in this case.
It's going to have a single pipe that serves as the underground detention, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Comments we have from engineering says, revise narrative in drainage report that still mentions detention pond, add note about detention clarification and label the drainage adjustment. Now, each one of those, it has a catch base in where each one of those boxes are at the end of the pipes? Is that correct?
Yes, and we've got a, we've got a weirder structure at the outlet side on the east side of the pipe that will contain that storm water or detain it inside the pipe and release it over a period of time that will not increase the peak flow rates.
Okay, and are you having to modify the box on 40th Street?
No, it's the one just upstream in the parking lot.
Okay, okay. Okay, let's talk about commercial design standards. The sides over 100 feet in length shall incorporate wall projections, and you're not putting any wall projections of any kind in, right? Those are just different colors and downspouts or something, but there's no projections of any kind?
We have a, on the north side, we do have a projection, a canopy projection over the doorways in the center. We did a recess instead of a projection due to some constraints we have with that front setback along Hale Lane, and that's, that's how we tried to accommodate that.
And what about the other side of the building? That's the north side, right?
Correct, that's the north side, yes.
And what are you doing on the south side?
South side is, there's two doors on that south side.
But it's just flat, there's no...
Correct.
Okay. And the roof line, there's no changes in the height of the roof line on either sides?
That's correct.
So, you're asking for a variance for that? And that metal that, that panel that you sent in today, where is that going to be used?
On the facade, the whole facade.
The whole thing will be that?
Yes, in the two different colors that's provided.
Okay.
This is Gil. There'll be a third flat panel that's going around like the entries and the canopies as well, so it'll be another texture. And then there's brick, this, at the corners here, and there's brick in the, between the entries. I think you can see my mouse. Right. And at every entry, there's brick at every entry.
But there's only those two entrances. On the backside, you're not putting the brick breaks in that on the backside?
Go to the other view, there's a little bit.
At all, at all the entries, at all the entries, there are, there are brick entries on all four corners.
Yeah, everywhere, have that little canopy to, for the entry, there's a brick there. And on the front facade, the north side, there's brick, all in the center entry.
And then those bay doors are on the west end of the building, right?
East end, that's correct.
One's on the east end and one's on the west end, right? There are those garage doors on each end?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's all I've got.
Okay, any questions or comments to the commission?
What's the reason that the roof line can't be adjusted?
We just tried to bring the brakes down. We're looking for a warehouse use, so we're, we've got a high roof in those areas. We tried to accommodate some of that with, you know, just with landscaping around the foundation, along the north and south sides. That's...
But that doesn't address the roof, the different heights in the roof?
Right.
Those, that section in the middle where you have that canopy, could the roof not be extended, a parapet be put up there? Can we shut up? We're deciding at the table, sorry. I'm not doing that. Sorry. God.
Couldn't hear the question.
The question is, is that towards the middle, is there any potential as far as the roof line as far as a difference that could be put there?
And where's the mechanical equipment and stuff? Is it outside or on the roof?
It'll be on the south side.
Okay.
I think we've shown it in the site plan, we're going to screen it.
Okay.
I think Pat, what Patsy was bringing up earlier is along the, the middle of the building, I think with some of your exterior design, if that can go higher than the roof line.
Well, that was Ben's question, why is there not a break in the roof line? Correct, Ben?
Yeah, that's right. I mean, if there's a reason that the roof line can't be broken, I'm willing to listen to it, but just looking at the building, we're nearly double what it should be without some break. So, I'm asking what the reason is.
It's a desire to keep it as high as we can for the warehouse space, so...
But that's interior. The outside look of the building, why can't there be something that breaks that roof line on the outside? It's still have the same height on the inside, you make it taller, not shorter.
We just try to accommodate that with, with that recess in that, that canopy there on the north side. That's what we're trying to do. We could show a projection to the, you know, we could raise that up. I just thought it gave a better look with the recess and the, and that canopy there, so...
So, is that a change you're willing to make, or...
Well, I mean, like you said, I don't want to design at the table, you know, and I want to make sure that, that we give you guys what you want, and we were trying to, you know, present this product. We did it a little differently than normal, and so I just wanted to, I mean, we can, we can add a, add a, add a break there in the center where that recess is, that goes up to the, the peak of the roof and, and show it that way. We're willing to do that.
Okay. I don't think we're looking for the final design.
You don't need a variance for the break in the roof line, you're going to meet that.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, so that variance goes away.
Okay.
So, really, it's more based off of the metal? Okay. Any other questions or comments from the commission?
We got, we got one more. They don't have the 60% windows, entries or awning along the 100-foot. Developments shall have articulating features such as arcades, display windows, entry areas or awnings along at least 60% of the facade. And I don't think those little windows at the top count as display windows. And the awnings that you have on there, does that cover 60%? So, that's a variance that you're asking for.
Correct. Yeah, it looks like, I don't know, I'm guessing 40%, maybe 50%.
Okay, so there's the variance as far as the, the metal, and then that there is not breaks along, other than the fact that it's different colors.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's a variance as far as design standards based off of the percentage associated with the windows as well. Okay?
Those are the three.
Okay. And then we took off as far as the, for the break in the roof line?
Right.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the commission? So, this would be a call for the votes on the variances. Are we taking all of that? Is that all done together? Are we wanting to take those separate?
I'd like to recommend we do them together.
Okay.
And that's with the roof line being amended, everything else staying just like they asked it for? Correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, that's a call for the vote by Mr. Covert?
I have one, one further question. What, what percent of the, is it brick versus metal?
It's, it's approximately, it's, it's between 5 and 10%, depending on which facade you look at for brick.
Okay, so, but the, the design standard, and I'm asking this legitimately, is the facade is to be primarily not metal, is that right, Patsy?
The predominant material can't be metal. So, they're asking for a variance for their predominant material to be metal with the amount of brick and stuff that they've shown on here and the breaks is shown on this.
So, if I understand, then what we're saying is 95% metal, 5% brick?
Correct.
Yeah. That seems like a lot.
I would just like to reiterate that, yes, it is a significant amount of metal, but we are asking for that architectural panel, which is a little different product, and I'm hoping in the future that we might be able to get that changed in the, in the ordinance so that we don't have to keep asking for these variances. I know that we've asked for them quite a bit in the future with the architectural panel.
Okay. So, I have a call for the vote by Mr. Covert.
Peters?
I'm sorry, no.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
No.
Covert? That was no?
Yes, that's what he said.
Okay. Parsley?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, so it's four to three.
Yeah, so this, the variance is past four to three. And do I have a motion on large scale?
Motion on large scale.
All right, so I have a, sorry, I think I got that from Mr. Covert. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peters.
Tyler? Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert? Parker? Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Large scale passes 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, L-20-08, Pure Springdale Phasing Plan, northwest corner of Gene George Boulevard and Dearing Road, presented by Crafton Toll. and Deering Road, presented by Crafton Toll.
This is Bradley Bridges with Crafton Toll, and this is the same plan that you guys have previously approved, we just added in another phase line. And just a couple of the reasons, with everything going on, just to reduce a little bit of the financial impact upfront, but also what this will allow us to do is to get Phase One open, get some of those buildings available and leased, and then we can proceed with construction of the future phases. The intent is still to complete the entire project without, you know, a pause in between, but this will allow us to get some of those buildings funded and open while we construct the remaining portions. We have the construction entrance off of Deering Road, so while construction is going on, the way those are laid out, you know, we won't interfere with the pedestrian traffic or the flow of the buildings that are available by the tenants. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Staff comments?
Phase One will include the detention facilities for the entire site, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I don't think we have any.
B2 on the south end, the detention pond on the north end will not be in Phase One.
Yeah, you do show those, that one that comes off of Deering Road, that those two right there at that corner are the two that would be part of Phase One. Yeah, okay.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, to the commission? This will be a motion. Motion to vote. Motion by Mr. Austin? Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Second.
Oh, Mr. Covert, a second by Mr. Covert.
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Large-scale passes, seven zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is waivers. We have a waiver, 20-06, Kami Scott, 8750 East Brown Road, waiver of sidewalk requirement, presented by Kami Scott. Do we have Kami on Zoom? So we'll table this one for next month on it, okay? Planning Director report?
The City Council actions taken in April was to approve the amendment of Chapter 112, which was adding the definition of the replat and the submission requirements for plats. That was approved. They approved the replat of Lot 7 and adding Lot 8 and 9 of Oakwood Park subdivision. They entered into an agreement with Garver Engineers for the design of the two intersections at, one at Park and Berry and Park and Cottle Streets for those intersection realignments. They approved the rezonings for the Adams family from A1 to C1 at 1641 Butterfield Coach Road, and the C and K Carrington and on West End Street from MF12 to MF16. They approved the conditional use for the mobile vending at the corner of Main and Meadow Avenue. They approved the street improvements for, waivers of street improvements for Pure Springdale on Deering Road and the Mill Creek Nursing Center on southwest 48th Street. They tabled the waiver of street improvements for the West End Street for the elder multifamily development. There was a question brought up by one of the council members about if the waiver included the street light and was a street light needed at that location, so it was tabled to give engineering a time to address that issue. As we just talked about, the next work session would be May 19th at 5:30. Greg Taylor has requested to be on the agenda to talk about the John Backus property on 112 that we dealt with several years ago. And before we put this other on there, my question was going to be, do we want to try to invite Water and Sewer to come and give us an update on their water and sewer plans? But if we have these two projects on there, I don't know that we're going to have time to get spring to water here as well.
I'd recommend you wait till June for the water.
I can include it.
Yeah, okay. It may be that we can encourage planning commission members to come for the work session and spread out council spend, having pretty much everybody a team, and we spread them out in the room. And, you know, I think if you all are comfortable with that, of course, if you're not comfortable with being here, we understand that part, but that may be the way we want to do the work session, too. And some of the requirements may be lifted by then anyway, so.
So I'm good with both Greg Taylor coming in and Williams Tractor. I'd like to have a little bit more understanding as far as what we're talking about with Greg Taylor on that piece.
I don't have anything to give you yet.
Because, I mean, we all know that property very well, and that's not going to be the predominant part of the whole conversation that evening, so I'm just going to set the ground rules of that. And, you know, we'll give 30 minutes. And if it goes over that, if what he plans to cover, if he doesn't feel comfortable with that, then he needs to put it at a future date. But without us having a lot of details on that.
And I'll ask you.
I'm just being very vocal on that because this has been, we've spent a lot of time on this piece.
I will encourage him to submit something beforehand.
Kevin?
Yes, go ahead, Dale.
B-20-20, did we do anything on that variance? I missed the miss.
Oh, we got tabled.
Yes, I'm sorry, B-20-20 was tabled for staff on that, sorry. I forget that you guys don't have.
No problem.
Yes.
Just making sure.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate that, Dale. So thank you, guys, for your patience this evening. And Roy, thanks for the reminder of everyone as far as if you're not talking to make sure it muted. Another big learning session this evening as far as, especially when you're dealing with large scales, but we'll see how that goes on there, so. Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you all, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.